Congratulations.
Committee agenda, we have a presentation, a certificate presentation for Michelle Miller, Councilmember Holland.
Thank you Chair. Yes, Council Chair Reposo and I have this certificate to honor Michelle. I'll just read it for everyone. The Kauai County Council congratulates and recognizes Michelle Miller of Kapaa, Kauai, on her achievements in the power walking competitions during the 2025 Huntsman World Senior Games held on October 6th to 18th, 2025 in St. George, Utah. As the largest annual multi-sport event in the world for athletes age 50 and above, the Huntsman World Senior Games includes over 40 different sports and offers a world-class competition experience that is also qualifying event for the National Senior Games, which is held every other year. The annual games provide seniors with an engaging international sports competition along with the education on active aging with a mission to foster worldwide peace, health, and friendships. In addition to the wide array of athletic events, the games promote overall health and wellness by providing lifesaving health screenings for various types of cancer, glaucoma, diabetes, high blood pressure, elevated cholesterol, and decreased bone density. On October 9th, 2025, Michelle Miller competed in the power walking race for seniors between the ages of 65 to 69, which was comprised of a 3,000 meter course around the local Dixie High School track on a brisk Thursday morning. Similar to race walking, power walking requires that one foot be on the ground at all times, i.e. running or jogging is forbidden, and a heel-to-toe foot strike is required, among other specifications. Michelle joyously crossed the finish line with a time of 25 minutes, 29.9... Thank you for being here, congratulations. It's just like front little circle, yeah, it'll go green.
Okay, I appreciate you honoring me. This is amazing and incredible and something I never expected. So, I did work very hard during these awards and very happy that I can be an example for the other Kupun on the island to strive a little harder. In fact, I see my friends at the gym and I say to them, "Hey, have you heard of the Huntsman's World Senior Games? You can compete too." So, anybody 50 to 95, my mom's 90 and she competes and has it for 15 years.
Love that.
So, yeah, let's set a good example for other people, for fitness, and to be able to encourage them to do more and push themselves a little more to stay in better shape and better health. Thank you again.
Good.
How do you train for this?
I work out three days a week and there's two ways of doing it.
Sorry, I train three days a week at the gym and sometimes I mix it up with going to the bike trail. I haven't done the track practice before, but I would like to start doing this this year. I practice at hopefully the longer length because the longer race is actually a little easier to win an award because there are fewer people, because not everybody wants to walk two miles fast. But I do train using elliptical, there's a machine that actually tells me how fast I'm going, so I calculate how fast, much faster I have to go to actually compete against these really fast ladies, because there's a lot of them. So, yeah, you know what really pushed me this year and last year was people right behind me. There were people right behind me and I knew they were back there and I was like, "You are not going to pass me." And you better not be in my age group because if you are, I saw a 70 person pass me, I was like, "Oh," you can tell by their badges what age group they're in. So, I was like, "Okay, you can go Miss 70, but none of you 65s can pass me."
Oh nice, and what's the trick to walking fast? I think my wife will probably appreciate me getting some pointers.
Absolutely, you know, there's a couple of things I learned from my mom, she has a coach, I don't. A lot of it is just the way you walk, you have to walk real straight without using a lot of extra energy, and she taught me to do a rope pull when you want to go faster so you feel like it's pulling you along, which does work really well for me. In fact, at the end of the race, I was just telling my friends that when I was getting close to the finish, my stepdad said, "Use your arms," because I was getting tired. It's like, "Oh yeah, faster, faster." So, yeah, a lot of it is just the form and the step and the pull, so.
Oh nice, no, congratulations.
Can't wait to see you do that.
Thank you, yeah, hopefully I can get maybe another award this next year. Thank you again.
You can just leave the, you can just leave the mic on. Yeah, there you go. Anyone else, Councilmember Carter?
I, I just want to applaud you, Michelle, and St. George is beautiful, isn't it? And so, I'm proud that we have so many of our seniors here off and go there. We've had some amazing ball players and different ones, and so it's really nice to have you on the team of winners that really show that the strength of Kauai, and I think we're lucky because we have, as long as you're happy to walk in the rain, we have year-round walking. It's not all snowy, so it's great. So, congratulations on well-achieved victory.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I hope we'll have even more people competing, but you're right, I have met several people that I know for sure that compete at the games. So, definitely a good, good opportunity for many people to get in good shape.
Anyone else? Mr. Kuli?
Just wanted to say congratulations. I'm curious about your mom. So, you said 95 years old, competing for 15 years now?
She's, she's just turning 90 in February, so yeah, she'll, she'd be in the next age group next year, but she somehow got the bug to compete way back when and started working with a trainer, and then she was able to compete for these last 15 years. She almost always gets a gold medal, but this year, I'm especially proud of her because there were five competitors in her age group from 85 to 89, and she got the gold medal. Yep, she did it, she was rocking.
Where did, where does she live?
She lives in Northern California, in the Bay Area.
And the races were held where again, Utah?
St. George, Utah.
Congratulations, good luck to you and your mom next year too.
Thank you so much. Her husband competes too, so we're a family together, so he's volatile.
Anyone else?
Just congratulations, it was very inspirational, you know, with mom and all of that, I mean, I just wanted to let you know, thank you so much, and keep going.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Yeah, I know.
I know, sometimes I thought, "Oh gosh, it's going to be so hard, I don't know if I should go again after this year," but we got here and did so well, I said, "I can't stop now, right?" Got to keep going.
Yeah, bless you.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to echo all the congratulations, great work. I mean, it's inspiring because I look at what you're doing, I'm like, "Oh man, I got to start working out."
At least walking.
At least walking.
Right, well, I have to admit, I do take a little time off afterwards. I took a week off and I got so lazy, I was like, "Ah, I'm just going to be a couch potato." Back in the gym again already, yesterday, I'm going again today.
Michelle, what was the distance again?
The first one was the 3,000 meter, they did the longer one first.
And, and what does that equate to?
It's about two, just under two miles, it's 1.86 miles. And the second one is a 1,500 meter, which is .93 miles. So, I just try to train it more like a mile and two miles, just to make sure I don't step on the finish line and then go, "Oh, done, I want to go a little further," which actually, it was so close, it was a photo finish at the end of that second race. I had to have them look at the video to see who was actually one step ahead, and I knew it was me, but I wanted to prove it to them. Otherwise, without that, I wouldn't have been able to prove it.
And, and this is speed walking?
It's called power walking. Race walking is where you have your legs straight, which looks like it hurts, but the power walking is you can bend your knees, so it's a little bit different form. They call the other one the walk, the silly walk, I think they call it, the power walking, or the race walking, because you look...
You cannot run.
You cannot, they will take away your right to be in the race.
So, I have a, I have a question because in the, in the military, you got to do a physical fitness run every year, and it's only a mile and a half. But, one, or you could choose to walk for three miles. And they give you a lot longer time. So, one morning, I showed up and I just wasn't into, I didn't want to run because I don't run, so I decided, "I'll just walk." But, you got to walk fast to make the time. And, I did not train, and after about a mile, my shin splints went, I had to walk backwards to finish because I couldn't, it was just... So, my question is, how, how do you, what, how do you get around the shin splints?
I do know the answer to that. Basically, when I start to walk, if I know I'm going to be going quick, I do a lot of warm-up because as soon as the muscles are warmed up, I don't get the shin split problem. So, definitely walking, even if it's slow, just getting those muscles loosened up is what works best beforehand because otherwise, yeah, sometimes I'll go to the gym and not, not do as much warm-up as I should and I pay the price for it, so definitely warming up.
Is there like a team event that you could participate in these games? Like something maybe the council could...
Yeah, sure, no, this particular competition is individuals. But of course, we're in teams by age, but we're competing against each other.
We'll send Mr. Kuli next year. Anyone else? If not, thank you very much and congratulations again, and keep inspiring the rest of us to get moving, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely, yes, might as well do it, right? It's good for your body and good for your mind too.
So, we'll, we'll take a short recess, and if you can come up under the seal, we're going to take a picture. So we'll, we'll take a short recess, and if you can come up under the seal, we're gonna take a picture. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We will be taking the committee of the whole out of order. So with that, Public Works, if you could call your committee.
First of all, I'd like to call our Public Works committee to order. And at this time, I'd like to recess our committee.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Parks and Recreation Transportation Committee. I'll let the record reflect that all members are present. We just have the minutes, so if you can call the first item.
Minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-five Parks and Recreation Transportation Committee meeting.
Wonderful. So seeing no objections.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. So seeing no objections and having no further business?
All those in favor?
Oh, sorry. Call for the vote first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So seeing no objections and having no further business, we will adjourn this committee. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call the Planning Committee to order, let the record reflect, all members are present. We also will recess this meeting for the committee of the whole.
I'd like to call the Public Safety meeting to order. I'll let the record reflect that all members are present. And Clark, can you please read the agenda items?
Minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-five Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting.
Do I have a, a move to approve?
Some move. Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I, I'd like to recess the meeting.
No, you can adjourn.
I could adjourn the meeting.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting. Let the record reflect, all members are present. Let's take the first item.
Minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-five Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting.
Second.
Anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Any questions for the members? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We shall recess at this time.
Thank you. Committee of the whole will come to order. Let the record reflect, all members are present. Madam, can we have the first item, please?
COW twenty twenty-five dash oh four Communication from the Managing Director, Agenda Time for a Briefing from Smith Garson, Washington DC Consulted to provide a recap of the services and activities provided to the county during the past year as part of their professional services contract.
Second.
Thank you. With that, I will suspend the rules, and we have our guests here from DC, along with our managing director, Rico.
Good morning. Rico Matiama, Office of the Mayor. So funny story, Michelle folks were in our building. They were in the wrong place. And so when she was on her way here, I said, oh, it's across the street. Do you want to drive? Now that I know she's.
Speed walking, speed walking, yeah.
She's good. She's gonna walk.
Well, thank you for being here. If we could just start by, you can introduce yourselves for our captioner, and then we can proceed with your, your presentation.
Wonderful.
Welcome back.
Thank you. This, this is actually my first time on the island. It's been fantastic so far. I think our colleague Kirsten might be on video, and I've just been really thankful that we've had an opportunity to tour a lot of the sites and meet a lot of people and, and get the background on the projects that we've been talking about in Washington for so long. Just for your background, I'm, I'm Brett Garson. I'm the CEO of Smith Garson. I'm gonna let John introduce himself. And then I don't, I know we had a presentation. I don't know if that's up, if there's a clicker, or if, if we might be going through that. I can also just talk through it. Either way is easy for us.
Well, while Randall's getting that up, I'll, I'll just like do a quick introduction of our, just DC lobbyists in general and the contract that we have with them. And so we just renewed it. We're very happy with their services. We pull above our weight class when it comes to federal dollars coming in. And it's, a lot of credit goes to these guys who work year-round for, to help us and support us. Polly Phillips in our office, she, she deserves a lot of thanks, too. She works as the liaison for these guys. She has planned a jam-packed trip while they're here. So outside of this council meeting, they're doing a lot of site visits to a lot of the sites that they've got some funding for, as well as potential future sites that we might ask for funding for. And so they, they're our boots on the ground in DC for that. In addition, obviously, you guys know about all of the federal turmoil that, turmoil that's going on right now. And they are a great resource for us to have, especially in these times, because they are in the know of what's going, going on, not just day-to-day, but hour-to-hour in that, in, in Washington DC. And Brett has even said, like, since he's here, like, he feels like he's more out of touch. And I feel like that is, that's good for us. It's a testament to how far away, and not that we're sheltered from it, but we're not in it every single minute of every single day. So I just thank them for being here and being, you know, responsive to us and always keeping us up to date. So thank you, guys. So with that, I'll turn it over to.
John, do you want to just introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. So hello, everyone. My name is John Bear. I'm a senior associate with Smith Garson. I work with Brett on behalf of the numbers of local governments, representing them in, in Washington DC, helping them through the appropriation process. This is also my first time in Congress, so it's an honor to be here, and thank you for having us.
Okay. Maybe I just, I'm not great at technology. Yeah, does it automatically turn off after? Oh, okay. So again, we're, we're Smith Garson. We're the government affairs firm, and I think we've been representing the county since two thousand twelve. So it's been a really great partnership. Just for background, so Smith Garson used to be Smith Dawson and Andrews, and that was founded in nineteen eighty-one. It's very much the same firm. I've just been elevated to more of a leadership role. Jim Smith, who many of you have probably heard from or met, is still very much part of the team. But just for background, it was founded in nineteen eighty-one. Jim Smith and Tom Dawson were in the Carter administration at the Department of Transportation in the White House doing intergovernmental affairs, which is why we have such a specialty doing local government infrastructure work. That has carried on since I began at the firm in, in two thousand seven. I've been with the firm just about almost eighteen years now, starting out as an associate and then rising to the position of CEO through just, you know, lots of hard work. And we've continued to build out our types of different activities we've worked on. We do a lot of water infrastructure and programmatic requests and everything that would touch a local government, like a county like yourselves. So that's a little bit of background on Smith, Smith Garson, what used to be Smith Dawson Andrews. It's been around for quite a while. As I mentioned, Brett Garson, the CEO, and I believe Kirsten is on the screen. She's the vice, the vice president. And then John here is senior associate. We're all gonna take turns talking through the presentation. We have some time at the end for Q and A. If you feel like you want to ask something, it's urgent, and, and you feel it's necessary to interject, that's fine, too. But there will be time at the end for Q and A. So, so things are a little different than they had been, and, and, you know, it's unfortunate in, in a lot of ways. You know, typically, since we've represented you, that we've been able to have regular grant updates because they come out on a regular basis. They're coming out from January through May at, at a very high rate, and then they kind of slow down. But there's, there's typically a, a format to them and, and sort of a busy time and, and less busy time. As a result of the Trump administration coming in, they did a review of lots of these programs throughout the federal agencies. That, that combined with halting some programs, some parts of different agencies, and, and then firing and, and furloughing several federal employees has resulted in a lot less competitive grants going out as regularly as they have been in the past. We believe that probably next year, we think that there's gonna be a more regular pattern to what we've seen traditionally. After all these reviews and the structures of these agencies get a little more solidified. But these are the areas that we typically send your way: public safety, wellness, economic development, water infrastructure, homeland security, disaster relief, everything that, that we've had a chance to talk about and tour while we've been here, and, and then many other areas. And you've been successful in going after funding, whether it was for cops or for firefighting, et cetera, disaster relief, et cetera. So I touched on this a little bit. The transition from the Biden administration, really previous administrations, including the, the first Trump administration, to the current Trump administration has been quite stark. There's been several changes in terms of the types of programs that have been prioritized, and also some of the terms and conditions that have been associated with federal funding that you might accept. It hasn't applied to every part of the federal budget and federal funding, but a lot of it has been changed so that any sort of policies related to diversity, equity, and inclusion are under the microscope and potentially something that the administration is not all right with. There's a focus on immigration and border security. And then really, a lot of the prioritization of sustainability, energy, all the programs that were in the Inflation Reduction Act related to sustainable transportation, renewable energy, those things have been, you know, really paused, or they were part of the reconciliation bill. HR one also called the one big beautiful bill that eliminated a lot of these programs and, you know, was pretty devastating to a lot of infrastructure. There's been a lot of coverage on those projects that have been, had their money pulled back. But it's, it's one of the results of the transition of the Trump administration. And then one of the things that I think has been, you know, a, a huge challenge, and that is changes with federal employees. And, and it might just be federal programs that typically have five people running them. Now they might have one person running them. So paperwork has slowed down. There might be people that just are let go because they were part of human resources, or they were part of programs that other administrations, really most administrations in the past, supported, and now they're just not part of the priorities of the Trump administration. So it has been quite a change. And, and I already kind of touched on that with the federal funding freeze. There's just been, whether it's been, you know, NOAA, Department of Energy, US Forest Service, a lot of the programs are being reviewed, and the money hasn't been going out yet, if it's been pulled back, and some has been rescinded, most, most tied to the reconciliation bill. And, and so we're, you know, Congress is still trying to, I would say, more so on the Democratic side, is trying to get its footing and understand where they can push back. Your delegation's been very strong in pushing back against the Trump administration. But the Congress is controlled by Republicans, and they're allowing a lot of what's going on to, to continue. So that's what we're looking at right now with, with the, the shift. But it's not all, it's not all gloomy. There are some positives. The appropriations and funding process has continued, and they're trying to get through it, even though we are in a shutdown, which is, which is something they're trying to work through. And I think with that, Kirsten's gonna take over and, and talk about the success we've had with, with you all.
Can everyone hear me?
And welcome back. She's been here.
Well, thank you all. Good morning, council members. And I'll just continue on Brett's point about county successes. Recent, so I'll touch on the recent county successes with, starting with projects that are pending in the fiscal year twenty-six appropriations process. When we last presented, last year, we had two projects that would be, were being considered for fiscal year twenty-five, which did not move forward. These were the, these two included the Lima-Ola Phases Three and Four infrastructure projects, and then the Kahaleo Safe Route to Schools project. The reason that these projects did not move forward is because political and policy divisions were too wide. And Congress ended up relying on a full-year continuing resolution, which extended fiscal year twenty-four funding levels. And as a result, fiscal year twenty-five projects did not move forward. But these projects are being reconsidered for twenty-six, so it's a unique year in that we essentially just shifted those projects over. And with the support of the delegation, we moved forward with the, with the Lima-Ola Phase Three and Four projects, as well as two new requests from the county. This includes the Kilowea Town Housing Expansion Project, which is currently funded at two hundred and fifty thousand by Rep. Takuta and two million for Senator Schatz in Huronau. And the Waimea-Kakea Shared Use Path, which is currently funded at two point three million, which is requested by Senator Schatz in Huronau. Again, these are, this will be in addition to Lima-Ola. It looks like there was some rearrangement on priorities, and the Safe Routes to School project is being, we're utilizing a different funding source for that through the county. So that one is not included on the current, in the current process. But we have three, these three competitive projects that are currently pending final passage. So I'll move on to the next slide, which is a little, talks more. The Water Resources and Development Act. So water, the Water Resources Development Act, or WARDA, which is a biannual water infrastructure bill that authorizes studies and projects carried out by the Civil Works Division of the US Army Corps of Engineers. In preparation for this bill, we collaborated closely with KEMA and the Public Works Team to identify priority projects for inclusion. And these projects were then presented to our congressional delegation for consideration, who then worked with the relevant committee of jurisdictions to include them in the legislation. So following the conference process between the House and Senate, the legislation was signed into law on January fourth. And I'm pleased to share, and I think they're just displayed on the screen, the following priorities for the county were included.
Hey, Kirsten, could, could you speak up just a little louder? I think people are having a hard time hearing.
Sorry. One sec. Let me see if I can turn this up. Okay. Is this a little better? I can't, I, I can't hear you all. So I don't know if you can hear me. Am I still coming through? Kirsten, you can continue. Just try to yell. All right, I can, okay. So these are the projects that were included in the Water Resources and Development Act for, that have elements to the county. It expands the authorities for both the Hanapeve and Waimea-Lovee assessments. This allows the Corps to take a more comprehensive look at flooding sources in both water, in both river watersheds, and to evaluate potential engineering and non-structural solutions. And then there's the, an additional coastal risk management study, which authorizes a new project to conduct feasibility study for flood risk management. And another key update in this year's WARDA is Section four four four, which was originally created in nineteen ninety-six, but it gives the Army Corps special authority to work with communities in the Pacific region on projects beyond your typical flood control. And includes environmental restoration and cultural resource preservation. It adds Hawaii to the Pacific region, so it expands the opportunity for the county to take advantage of additional pot, an additional pot of Corps money. Excuse me. And now that these projects have been authorized, we'll work with the county and the delegation to appropriate funding to complete them. And we've had great success utilizing WARDA in the past. Excuse me. And before I pass it back to Brett and John, I apologize, I'm losing. And before I pass it back to Brett and John, I apologize, I'm losing my voice. All right, I don't know if you can take the one big beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So in, in my, kind of the beginning slide. Yeah, there we go. It's like the Zoom days, the early Zoom days where you'd be off the mic and didn't realize it. So my apologies. So, you know, we, the reconciliation bill was just incredibly devastating to local governments all over the U S with, with transportation projects, with, you know, some of these EPA community change projects. You know, you name it, a lot of that unobligated money was rescinded, solar projects just across the board. But the areas that I think were most concerning were the changes to Medicaid and to SNAP. And, and really it was the process changes that were designed, you know, to essentially make it more difficult to get these resources. And, you know, I think what's, what is also unfortunate is that they designed it so, I mean, I guess it gives you, gives us a little time to prepare to, to hit in 2027, but they did that to get past the midterm elections. And so I think, you know, states are starting to try to figure out what this means for them. You know, folks that get these benefits will now have to check in four times a year instead of one time a year. The provider tax that states rely on when they get federal funding, you know, will be less generous, and so they'll have to find a way to plug those holes. So, you know, we can go down the list and, and get you that information of, of the changes. It's quite complicated, which is why it's taking states a lot of time to understand what the real impacts are going to be, and how many people are they're going to impact, how many people this will impact. But I can tell you, the, you know, the Congressional Budget Office had determined at, at the time that it was between, you know, eight and 11 million people would lose health insurance, you know, within 10 years of, of the bill. So I think, you know, we're, we're staying on top of whenever we see updates out of H H S on any of the regulations that are, you know, being changed. A lot of these are going to states, so you might, you know, you're not necessarily going to have a stake in setting up the, the new programs and processes, although you'll get to weigh in with the state or let them know you have concern because it's going to have negative impact on your constituents. So I think, you know, that was the, the most concerning part of that bill, out of a lot of, you know, different pieces that were troubling. It did continue the tax credits from the 2017 tax bill, you know, that really benefit the wealthiest individuals in the country. And I believe, you know, we could send you more information on all of the provisions with that, within that legislation. There's, you know, some language related to low-income housing tax credits with, which is beneficial, and you guys have done a great job of utilizing those for your housing projects. But, you know, where there's increases, enhancements to low-income housing tax credits, you know, there's other things being taken away. So on the balance, it was, you know, it wasn't a great bill for local governments. Moving on to the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which is essentially, if you may recall, the Surface Transportation Bill, which is a bill that gets reauthorized every five years, that had a bunch of other infrastructure provisions and funding tied on to it, which was incredible, and really, you know, an important thing that the U S needed to, one, continue to build on roads, paths, bridges, but also to increase funding for water infrastructure, for broadband, for energy, for wildfire mitigation. That bill lapses in September of next year. We've heard from the committee that it, it seems like they may not hit the, the deadline by September 30th. It's just because we're in the middle of the shutdown, which we'll talk about, but also because it's a complicated bill to put together. I mean, it's a five-year bill with a lot of policy. It's focused on transportation, on all modes of transportation, and there's a chance that they might bring in these other infrastructure elements, whether it's water, broadband, or energy. I don't know that that's what we would see if we had this current Congress, but it's, we've heard in meetings, it's a priority for a lot of members of Congress. And they've had programs within that that the, the county's really taking advantage of. We know the success you've had with Tiger, with Raze, I mean, just critical projects, large dollars, and, you know, over 20 million. And then the Rural and Tribal Technical Assistance Program and Safe Streets for All, I know you've taken advantage of that. And we've continued to talk to your delegation about the areas that we support and, you know, continuing to, to make sure Raze and, and Build, it's called now, it's now called Build, is part of that next bill, but that's something that Congress is busy taking care of. Moving, moving along. Oh, and I'm, my apologies, I forgot to, to click on there. So I, and, and again, we can send you any of this information so that you have it. Moving on to the, the government shutdown. And this is where Reiko was saying, you know, we're, we're here, so it, I was, you know, it's hard for me to like follow everything that's going on because it's, there's nonstop, even though it doesn't feel that way, there's nonstop people talking about the government shutdown and then, you know, the White House doing things like changing the East Wing on a, you know, feels like on a whim. And so, you know, what I've heard today is that they likely will, because right now, you all know we're in a, we're in a government shutdown. It's been going on since, since October 1st. There was legislation to do a continuing resolution through November 21st. We're running right up against that, that extension, and the purpose of that is so that Congress passes, one, opens the government, but also passes the fiscal year 26 spending bills. And if we're trying to do that before November 21st, there just isn't the time with Congress being out and, and holidays and, and those sort of things. So I think the talk today, this morning that I saw, was that they want to do an extension potentially through middle of December or even into early next year, which is more concerning to me, but it's, you know, it still would give them time to pass the appropriation bills. You know, earlier in the summer, they talked about even doing a continuing resolution. If they did that, they would attach earmarks, there's support to attach the earmarks, which is critical to you all. But, you know, we're going on day 22 of the shutdown, and it's affecting a lot of federal workers that are, you know, if you're essential, you're working, you're in the office, you're not getting paid. You know, if you're furloughed, you're not in the office, you're not getting paid. And, and then, you know, there's folks like high-stress jobs, and there's a lot of them, like the air traffic controllers and TSA agents, that are still at work and, and doing the frontline work, and, and they're not getting paid. And so that's, that's really troubling. And so there's talk that at some point, because I think the second paycheck hits next, maybe it's the end of this week or, or Tuesday next week, that that might apply pressure, but, you know, that's, that's TBD. It's hard to know when, you know, what might be the momentum, you know, to, to get the shutdown ending. And, and I think some of you know that, you know, the Democrats are saying, there's going to be impacts on the Affordable Care Act enhanced subsidies if we don't pass this by November 1st, because the open enrollment season starts, and people are going to have 10%, 20% increases in their insurance payments, which is devastating to a family budget. And so that's what the Democrats have been arguing needs to get done. I think it's resonated with people, but there just isn't folks on the Republican side that seem to be moved by that, so we're still at a stalemate. Moving along, you know, this is kind of the, a few of the different programs, not all of them, that are impacted by the shutdown. They have been able, from what I understand, to fund women, infant, children, that essential program through at least November 1st. There's talk that they will find resources to, to pay for that, for Head Start, but, you know, if this continues, it, it's, it's potentially up in the air, and that is going to really impact families. You see with, you know, programs that haven't, haven't been disrupted, SNAP, TANF, LIE HEAP, for now. You know, we, the longer this goes on, there's the potential that it could be impacted. And I talked a little bit about, you know, what's open, what's not open. Offices doing healthcare, TRICARE, Medicaid, military and federal retirement benefits, UPS, those, those offices remain open, the workers are not getting paid, but they are continuing their operations. National parks, national monuments, public lands, areas, those are, those are shut down for the most part that I've noticed. I know some offices are, are keeping them open. So I think, you know, I'm going to click real quick. We talked about the impacts on federal workers. Well, there's been, you know, discussion, I know that there's some federal court cases, fortunately, that are keeping these federal employees from actually getting fired during the shutdown, but there's talk about the White House trying to fire, you know, between 4,000, 10,000 federal employees in different agencies, but that is on hold because of litigation. So, so the, the government shutdown is significant. It's impacting a lot in Washington, and, you know, our hope is that this, you know, moves, moves forward, the Affordable Care Act subsidies get extended. We, it, there is positive momentum on that side in the sense that Republicans have said we will come up with some sort of agreement to extend it a year or two years, but we're not doing that until, you know, the federal government is open. So I think, I think something will be done on that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about appropriations in 26.
So as you know, the fiscal year 25 ended on September 30th. The House and Senate have to pass 12 spending bills, or the House, so, so far, the House has passed three of those 12. Defense, military, construction, energy, water, everything else, which includes financial services, housing, transportation, they, they have yet to pass. Senate has, has just passed military, construction, agriculture, and legislative branch. There hasn't been any movement since the start of the shutdown. You know, there's been talk of, of, of passing them one by one to try and get some of these government agencies open, but as of now, there hasn't been any movement on the House floor. The House has been in recess in the month of October, so it'll, if anything is going to happen, it's going to likely be at least in the first week of November. And I'll also add that, because it was on, on the slide, that the President Trump releases budget request, which isn't a bill, it's just a list of, of priorities that he would like to see happen in the budget, which is, you know, the Republicans in Congress take that, it, it leads them into sort of know what the executive branch wants in the budget. So in addition to the appropriations, there's also a number of authorization bills. So authorization bills, it sets the policy for the year appropriations, gives those departments money to enact those policies. So there's also the National Defense Authorization Act, the N D A A, which has to pass every year. Both the House and the Senate have passed theirs, they need to reconcile their differences, meaning they have to negotiate amongst each other to, to get a final bill passed. And on the President's desk, there's also the Surface Transportation Reauthorization, there's the Farm Bill, which is an omnibus, meaning it, it's a package of different laws. It covers a whole spectrum of agriculture, nutrition, rural services, forestry, et cetera. It typically passes every five years. That was the case, it was in 2018, it passed, which they, it went until 2023, and then they passed two one-year resolutions that just continue it. And so they're trying to finalize the, the Farm Bill right now, so that it would be another five years where those policies are enacted.
And I'll just add a couple others. We mentioned where you've done really well, the Water Resource Development Act. We've heard that they're going to start accepting ideas, legislative priorities in the next month or so. That's the Environment and Public Works on the Senate side, and then the House Transportation Infrastructure on the House side. So I think that's going to be a, a place that we would want to target. Of course, we talked about the Surface Bill, the annual appropriations bills. And then there's a mishmash of different policies that likely will get decided by the end of the year. There's been some positive momentum with some different housing bills that would be beneficial to affordable housing. And then there, they might tackle some different health-related provisions. And, and then there, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of other areas that aren't necessarily directly relevant, relevant to local governments, but they'll work on and likely include in, in the end, end year package. Future federal advocacy efforts. I know Kirsten was, was going to cover this, but I, you know, I'll, for expedience sake, I'll go into this. So we will continue to, to talk with, with the delegation. You know, to Reiko's point, they are really grateful for the, how organized you all are with your federal agenda and the work that you put into ideas and proposals. And so that would be, that'll certainly be part of the outreach. We're going to continue to, to monitor any legislation that is important to the county. You know, the executive branch actions, I think we're doing a ton of monitoring of that. Every day we're, you know, getting new information, changes from executive orders, the, you know, hundreds of executive orders that then, you know, apply to different agencies. So we track that, include, include those in updates. We mentioned W R D A. And then, of course, the visit to Washington, D C, next year will, you know, be focused on. And, and so I think that, that kind of sums it up. And then just want to thank you all for giving us the time today and want to open up to your questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys being here in the update. Council members, I just want to remind us all that the posting on today's agenda is specific to the recap of the services and activities provided to the county in the last year. So while there was a lot of discussion or, or sharing of what's happening in D C, for today's discussion, in, in line with the Sunshine Law, we are limited to what is posted. So let me just start by, by saying, in, in your slide six, the, why does this thing keep going off and on? Lima-Ola, Kilowea Town Housing, and Waimea-Kakea Shared Use Path, those are pending passage. And then on P, on slide seven, W R D A, you got the Waimea-Hanapepe Levy Projects, Flooding Coastal Storm Risk Management, Expedited Feasibility Report for Waimea River 400, and expansion of the Section 444 Pacific Region Authorization. My question is, we, we don't see any projects for our water infrastructure, or wastewater infrastructure, or solid waste infrastructure. And when we're in D C, you know, we, we hear all the time that there's so much money, and I'm, I'm not, this is pre-shutdown and pre-what's-going-on in D C. But is it because we're, the county's not asking for those types of opportunities, or is it not available? Because that's critical infrastructure needs that we have here that are in the hundreds of millions of dollars, but I don't, I don't see any, any movement on that.
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. So you're absolutely right. These are the, the pending projects, the earmarks that made it to the step that, you know, is critical, it's in the report. So if they pass these bills for 2026, that money will come to the county. And that, that's the hardest step, is to get them, and to the bills. On your question on, on wastewater, drinking water, one, a lot of that money flows from EPA down to the state, and that's, they have a revolving loan fund. And then a lot of that money has to then, you apply for it, you know, that's something that we could look into, how they allocate that out to the islands, but a lot of the EPA money that you go after, you go through there. On the earmark front, I think the strategy we, we've taken, and I can talk to Kirsten a little bit about this, is that we've thought that the, the Army Corps of Engineers, that that is a better route to go after these huge projects of need, because they have the ability to do studies and then get within their budget large amounts for design and construction, whereas if you're targeting earmarks, a lot of times you're looking at, you know, smaller amounts. I'm not discounting that that's an approach that works, but if you're trying to go after these larger dollars, it takes a little bit. it takes a little bit more time, but the Army Corps is a, is a successful route for doing that.
I guess my question is, are you working with our administration on that? Is that something that we're pursuing? Is it, I'm, I'm just curious, is it something that's on a priority list somewhere for the County of Kauai?
Yeah, water, water infrastruc, infrastructure, the levees, that, that's important.
Well, not, not, not so much the water levees. I mean, we, we, we've been successful in getting funding for our levees. I'm talking about our water department, our wastewater department. That, that's what I'm talking about, the infrastructure, uh, funding for improving our wastewater and.
Yeah, well, I know, uh, I think there's a separate entity that does some of the water infrastructure, uh, that we're not necessarily working with. Um, we can get more information.
Uh, that, that's, that's kinda what I'm asking. So you're, you're, you're not directly working on those items right now?
I'll jump in, um, yeah, we don't necessarily include water in our requests, but wastewater, um, solid waste issues, yes. Um, it's all a comprehensive package that we do for our legislators, our senators up there and our, our congressman up there. Um, so we do a comprehensive, um, I don't know how many pages it is, but it's a list of basically all of our top priorities. And then basically what we do from that, um, that narrative is these guys help us. This one probably ha, doesn't have a chance of getting funded, this one does. And that's kind of how they help us prioritize. Um, but we do, we do try and, um, see how we can get for wastewater and solid waste.
But water is not included in that?
We haven't.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't include water?
Yeah, I mean, i, i, it's definitely a need, um, so it's just kind of outside of our, our scope.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I think that we, we have to put water in it. And so while it's not exactly under the administration, it's still part of the county. Um, this morning I watched again a, a talk on opportunity zones cause our critical, critical need is housing, right? We have such a crisis in housing for our workforce. Um, but the underlying problem with that is a lack of infrastructure. And so in this, um, um, piece that I saw this morning redirect, it was all directed at Hawaii. They talked about the Milken Institute.
Yeah.
And so it seemed like that was pretty great because it looks like when we're looking at opportunity zones this time, there might be ways to get funding for infrastructure. Um, and, you know, water does, is basically managed separately, but it's part of the county. And if we don't create the water infrastructure we need, we, it costs $100,000 to put the infrastructure in just to flush a toilet. I'm not exaggerating. So, um, that is a real challenge that I think that we need to look at. And when I'm looking at, I don't know if, when you have housing here, does opportunity zones fall under housing that I can ask on? Because the last time I did opportunity zones, which I followed heavily, it, the, the markers and the metrics for what created an opportunity zone, they didn't put them in the right places. And it looks like this time they're putting them in better places. And so I'm really hoping that we are focusing on that because we need to be able to create these, these lowered costs. And I was really encouraged to hear that there can be, uh, funding, and it's a free technical resource, this Milken Institute, to be able to help add in, um, monies for infrastructure. And so, uh, certainly wastewater, but we cannot understate, um, potable water. And I believe when you said you're going on your tour, that you're doing water. So I hope that you're gonna go talk to the water department, is that gonna be on their tour?
So I will add too that any of the money that we get for these developments, whether it be Limaola, Kilowea, uh, Waimea 400, if it's related to housing, which most of these are, it, um, it does cover, um, I mean, we go after distinct things, right? So it's not just Limaola in general, it's Limaola infrastructure, Limaola vertical, Limaola design, um, whatever it may be. So the infrastructure portion can be used towards water. And, um, Adam does a good job of making sure that he has, you know, uh, things that are ready to break ground in order to, um, make sure that there's a.
Okay.
Hang on real quick, Kirsten is on Zoom, she has, she wants to.
Yes, can you all hear me? I don't know if my audio is coming through, can you hear me?
Yes.
That's better.
Great, um, I apologize, I wanted to interject earlier, um, on the wastewater front. Um, the county, uh, does a great job of informing us of their wastewater, um, needs and projects. And we usually include those in a section in our federal agenda that we present to the delegation. Um, just in fiscal year 24, we were able to get, uh, engineering and design funding 1.8 million for the Kilowea Town Wastewater Treatment Plant. So to Reiko's point, um, when we are tackling some of these larger projects, we do, uh, target some of the, the wastewater and infrastructure needs, um, that are, are, are relevant for some of these projects. Um, so Brett's point, the county does utilize the money that comes through EPA from the Clean Water and Drinking Water Revolving Fund. Um, and, you know, uh, just recently, the county was, uh, awarded funding from EPA for the cesspool conversion, which I think impacted a lot of residential homes. Um, and they were very creative in, in targeting that funding as, uh, EPA doesn't traditionally, uh, provide a lot of funding for residential, uh, areas. So it is an area that we do touch on with our delegation. Um, and now knowing that council would like to expand that, we can absolutely, uh, make that a more robust request in our agenda.
Thank you, I just wanna say all, all aspects of our county needs are impacted by the lack of availability for, um, water. So I, I've just respectfully asked that we broaden these guys, Kuliana, that your responsibility to, to look at, at a potable water.
Does others wanna, you have questions or are you making comments? Cause others wanna have, others have questions.
I'm done, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Bullisong.
Just to clarify, um, and this might be a question for managing director, it's because the entities are separate, water department is separate, so they're representing us, but there's no contractual agreement with the water department.
That's correct, and, and any information that we, that they send us, water department is included. Like when we forward it on, it goes to the water department. So, I mean, in that sense, they are receiving the grant information and those kinds of things that, that these guys send us. But that's correct.
Any other questions?
Can I address the opportunity zones? Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say, we're, we're closely following it. You, to your point, they made changes in the reconciliation bill on that. The op, the opening for new opportunity zones is, I believe it's July 1st next year. And then the governor has to put forward those. Uh, to your point, there, it's a little more restrictive, but it's supposed to be more beneficial for the areas that need it. And so that's absolutely something that we're watching. Got, uh, Treasury's only put out a little bit of guidance, not much. So we're tracking that and we'll make sure the county gets that information.
Any other questions regarding the presentation? Okay, awesome, thank you, enjoy your tour.
All right, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Mr. Cycle, is there no registered speakers there? Mr. Cycle?
For the record, Lonny Cycle. It's a very interesting presentation, very informative. Uh, the public's thanks to our consultants, they obviously are doing a good job for us. The question that I have both for the council as well as for the consultants is we have a lot of conversation today about wastewater. From my perspective in the public, we do not have, the county itself does not have a plan to deal with wastewater. We have sewage treatment plant in Waillua that routinely is, uh, infecting the ocean with sewage. The plant itself is antiquated and it's in a tsunami and flood zone. Public discussion is it needs to be moved. The question is, how can these people go get us federal assistance when we don't have a publicly expressed plan on what we want to do? Obviously, we need to replace the sewage treatment plant in Waillua. My understanding is we have at least one other sewage treatment plant that needs to be relocated. We're probably looking at a billion dollars by the time everything's done. How can they go lobby to get that kind of money for a non-plan? We have a wish list, we don't have a plan, we have talking points. We have PR statements, but we do not have a plan. And so I encourage the county council to assist the administration in moving forward and coming up with actual plans, not talking points. Because they're not gonna be able to get money for talking points, they can get money for plans. And so we need to step our game up, our potable water, our sewage treatment, as well as our landfill. All of these require actual plans in which you can discern what is supposed to happen by this point in time for X amount of money. And then we can go beg for federal assistance in these terrible days that we live in for federal assistance. So thank you all very much. I know that both the council and the administration are working diligently on our three primary problems. And thank you and continue with your good work.
Thank you.
Correct, Bossard, registrar to speak.
Mr. Bossard?
I'll do something like that, all right, Kurt Bossard, Waillua Homesteads, Lehuie, and all points in between. So I'm gonna introduce a couple words here that may not be popular. Private enterprise, I don't know if anybody has used those before, but I think that, uh, it's kind of important to take into account that whatever is happening up until now as far as infrastructure goes, is not happening. And, um, we have a general plan that we're not able to follow uh, because we don't have water or wastewater. We had these people come up here and I wasn't impressed, um, by what they had to say. We're gonna look at this and we're gonna look at that. Is that what they've been doing for the last year? Looking at stuff, you got action, not enough, obviously. So what about private enterprise, opportunity zones? They don't bring that up. Um, so if, if, uh, you don't get the funding on these project, that what you're producing here is, uh, on your wish list or, and your plan, if it is a plan, is what you're gonna need private enterprise monies to come in and help with this stuff because the government money is shrinking up. Their job is apparently shrinking up. They didn't mention opportunity zones. This Milken Institute, and what a failure here on Kauai, the prior 10 years was, where the wrong areas got, uh, delegated, or maybe it was right. Maybe it was supposed to be Kukiaula, who knows? That, they had infrastructure there so they could actually build stuff. You don't have infrastructure here to build stuff. So if you don't get input from private enterprise to put in water and whatnot, preferably in the Lehuie area because that's where the general plan wishes to have it. Um, this is what the Milken Institute, uh, where it's putting together these large funds to invest in infrastructure. This is the, uh, the opportunity zone is a tax credit type, type of thing. You are forgiven on some tax on capital gains by investing in, in the areas and in the projects that the, uh, that you would wish to have them put. Unfortunately, Hanalei and, uh, Kukiaula basically were the places now. The agencies here, having lacked the, the, this money for this infrastructure, have not been able to institute planning and the things that we would like them to be able to do cause you can't plan if you don't have infrastructure. And if you don't have the money for it, that's it. So could we use money from, um, perhaps hundreds of millions of dollars from the mainland to put water and sewer into Lehuie? If they would be designated as appropriate areas? That's the, today's issue is, how do you get the proper area designated? Is it just waiting to see what the feds say the areas qualify?
Should I hang on real quick, is there anyone else wants to testify? Not, you can continue.
Thank you. Um, is it, is it just sitting around and waiting for the federal government to say that it's gonna be Hanalei and Kukiaula again? Or whether the government is, or the governor is going to, um, designate us as such? Cause the governor has to be involved in this as well. Or is it, uh, trying to get out in front of this? And, and can you lobby to have some flexibility from the federal government in designating areas? I think Hawaiian Homes now has land around Lehuie too. There's kickers for, or preferences for, uh, those types of indigenous groups and rural areas. And, uh, if you wait too long and you don't even investigate, it's a no can type of thing. And that, nobody's gonna do this for you. Somebody's gotta be designated to, to actually, um, our senators, I guess, would be the most appropriate, be designated, and I've written everybody and I've let them know, I'm not gonna participate in this myself. This is just from my experience and failure of the county, um, I felt, in the project that we did on Poipu Road. So I'm gonna keep saying that, whether anybody likes it or not, and hope we do better in the future. And, uh, you know, it's, it would take somebody up on top to, to do, to do this because otherwise who's, who's responsibility was it, it'll fall through the cracks.
Questions? No questions, thank you. Anyone else? Not a call meeting back toward any further discussion? Just scouted.
Well, I'm appreciative that we, we have our consultants and I'm appreciative of how much our mayor's administration and the whole different departments, I see, um, both police and Office of Prosecuting Attorney in here. All of them have done a pretty good job of getting federal monies. So I'm very appreciative of what that is. And, um, I just wanna make the statement again that I think we really need to bring our water department under this umbrella of what we're actively working to get, you know, in an active way. Because water impacts everything. And so without helping us to get that federal funding in, it looks like we have a 1.3 billion dollar estimate of what we need to do in today's dollars. And so, um, it, it slows down every other possibility. So I really wanna, um, emphasize how important infrastructure is. And I see police in here, I thought maybe they might be talking about, um, you know, getting money for our, um, first line, I mean, our, our, um, our dispatch people, cause that's something I am working on. And I just gotta wait for the government to open up to have that happen.
Anyone else, Mr. Kuliana?
Chair, sorry, um, I actually had one quick question for the finance, um, for the managing director, based on the presentation.
Okay, I'll suspend the rules, Reiko.
It's a pretty simple one. In one of the, in their final slide, they talked about finalizing the 2026 federal agenda and then planning a Washington DC visit. So this Washington D, DC visit, that's something that happens annually?
Um, usually we tie it into the, I, I think, usually we tie it in, um, to the US Conference of Mayors in January.
And then, um, who goes from the county?
Uh, Mayor goes for sure, um, and Polly has gone, um.
Who?
Polly.
Polly?
Polly Phillips, yeah, she's, she's a direct, um, connect between, um, our DC lobbyists.
And does the mayor, um, would you guys think to invite maybe someone from the council? Maybe our chair, or maybe our chair of our finance committee?
Uh, it's possible, um, we do meet with the delegation and, um, sometimes even some of the administrative, um, federal agencies.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Call a meeting back toward any further discussion? All right, well, uh, let me just say, Lonny, I think you are correct, we need the plan. Um, that's. That's, that's, you know, and I don't know what more the council can do as a council to move that along. We've offered the funding. We've kind of pressed Public Works for quite a while. But water is critical. And I was kind of surprised to hear that, that we're, they're not in the discussion with our lobbyists. I think that they need to be. You know, the water department gets their funds only from user fees. They don't have the ability, like the county and the other departments, to go out and sell bonds, you know, borrow money. They just don't because they don't have the revenue to support it. So, they, they will never be able to catch up with only user fees. It's just not going to happen. So, they need, they need assistance. And I'm hoping that after today's discussion, they, they are included. I'm also hoping that, I think we talk about this every, every year when they do their presentation, that we should have the finance chair sitting in with the decision-making or at least the discussions with our lobbyists to have the council's input in that discussions as well. Because I think if the councils had a say in the, in the priority list, I guarantee, I can almost guarantee that it would be water, wastewater, and solid waste would be what the priorities are. And I kind of agree with Lonnie in a sense that, not Lonnie, I'm sorry, with Kurt. Like, they looked into a lot of things and they said, oh, there's another agency, or there's maybe EPA. You know, our lobbyists that we pay should be doing that for us. They should be assisting us and not telling us, oh, yeah, okay, well, that's another group. No, no. And, and I guess I'll have to really scrutinize the contract better as they come up for funding at the next budget because I expect more. And, and I do. And I, and I do expect, or ask, I should say, strongly suggest that we have some council representation, both at, at the trip to DC and as well as to the discussions that we have as we formulate the priority lists going forward. I really think the council needs to have input. And I think the funding should be contingent on that in the budget. Because it's, this is what we get. We end up with a, a end of the year briefing or mid-year briefing. And then we have a lot of questions because we didn't participate in the ask. So, that's what I'll be looking for as we move forward. So, with that, anyway, the motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And there is no further items on the committee of the floor. So, I will adjourn that committee. We can go back to the beginning. And that will be, yes, Public Works.
Yes, I'd like to call Public Works and Veterans Services, I mean, after order.
All members are present.
Bill number 2972, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 16. Kauai County Code 1987 is amended relating to the traffic code, electric bicycles.
So, move. Motion to approve.
Move. Second.
Move and second. Any questions? Any comments? If not, go ahead. Thank you. Oh, did?
Buluson is not on.
He's not on. He's not on.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and second. Any further discussion? I do have an amendment that I've asked, oh, I asked, I asked Mr. Buluson to.
Move to approve, approve as amended?
Move to circulated.
Move to circulate.
Move to circulate.
Move to approve, move to amend as circulated.
Move to amend as circulated.
That we kind of need a second.
So, we did receive some testimony from Mr. Carl Imperado. And he had what I thought was a very practical suggestion. And that would be, what we did not add in the bill was. Okay, I apologize. The first, my, this is the first amendment. This is a pretty much a housekeeping amendment. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll get to my second, my second amendment. So, the first one is just changing the, the speed limit from, I guess it was 28 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour to be in line with the state. So, that's what the first one is. Thank you with that. So, any discussion on this amendment? Anyone in the audience? Go ahead.
I have a question. Do we know how many miles an hour the bikes are that are generally sold on Kauai? Do they, is that state law match like the manufacturers? I'm just wondering. Do we know?
No. I mean, they, they're capable of going faster, I believe. It's like a vehicle, right?
Yeah, because some of them don't. Some of them go under a certain mile per hour. But I was just wondering, because I, my understanding was, after looking at 28 miles an hour, there were very few places that sold any bikes that go over 28, but there were unders. Now, I'm just wondering how many go between 20 and 28 miles an hour, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know that. I don't know that. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no. I think Oahu passed one similar to this.
Correct.
And, yeah, I think the motorized, it's like the motor stops at 20 miles per hour on some bikes. And then some, I think it goes like over 28.
And then, yeah.
I think they had like a speed of 28 because I think if you're going downhill, the motor stops at 20, but the bike will go faster. I don't know. It's kind of interesting reading a lot of different classes on it. But, yeah, I'm okay with this amendment.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's just, that just defines electric bicycle. But as far as the, the behavior in the bill, this is just limiting the definition of the, it's not limiting the bicycle to 20 miles an hour. It's limiting, it's the definition of e-bicycle.
Excuse me, we have someone on Zoom that can answer the question.
So, I guess we have someone on Zoom who can answer the question.
I want to suspend the rules.
Can we suspend the rules and have that person on Zoom?
Aloha, can you hear me?
Close, can you get real close to the microphone? Because, yeah, we, our system is, thank you.
My name's Travis Council. I'm the executive director of the Hawaii Bicycling League, local nonprofit organization. Happy to, here to answer questions and can provide some clarifying points on the speed or classes or anything like that. Certainly agree with this amendment to align with the state law. But I do want to note nationally, e-bikes are up to that 28 miles per hour, largely class one, two, and threes. But statewide, our law is currently limited to 20 miles per hour. So, aligning your bill with that 20 mile an hour limit for that definition currently is likely the, the legal way to do that.
Thank you, sir. Can anyone in the audience move to the audience and have Lonnie?
For the record, Lonnie Psychos. A request from the public that when you have amendments and things, if you could post them up on the screen so the public can read what you're all are discussing. And just an observation about the speed limitation on these vehicles, whether it's a e-bike, a scooter, whatever it is, the electronics, it was as simple as going online and it told me what color wire to cut in the ignition circuitry, which removed the speed limiter and could have got my scooter up to close to 50 miles an hour. However, there's no way to get 50 mile an hour brakes. So, you're stuck with 20-plus mile an hour brakes on a machine that goes way too fast. But this whole thing about speed limitation doesn't have to do with the max that the bike is capable of. It has to do with how it's programmed. And so that's what we're dealing with is most of these machines are capable of going much faster than 28 miles an hour if you monkey with the speed limiter. Thank you.
Call our meeting back to order? Anybody else?
I just want to support what Mr. Psychos just said because I had hoped to get a lot of the kids in this room. You know, they're in school. I've talked to a number of the e-bikers in my community. And they've just showed me how they flip it. They can go 40 miles an hour on these bikes. And it's, it's a little simple adaptation. And they, you know, they're too young to realize that they shouldn't show me that, but they just show me how they can. They're, they're probably 11, 12.
Any further discussion? I just want to make sure we understand that the 20 mile an hour only is only related to the definition, not, not the speeding limit of a e-bike. The e-bike, the bike, got to follow the same road rules as the vehicles do. It's just saying that if, if it's a, the e-bike has to be providing power of up to 20 miles per hour or 750 watts. But this bill will allow or prohibit reckless behavior, careless behavior, that the child going 40 miles, or anyone going 40 miles an hour in a residential area weaving through and driving crazy, then it's a violation of this, this ordinance.
So, thank you, Chair. And the reason why I, I still pointed that out is at least the way I read this definition, I'm, I'm certainly supportive of passing this. But it says capable of, they might actually, in fact, be capable of more. But we could, we, oh, pass this. But, you know, these aren't the big, serious bikes. These are still little kids on their bikes.
Yep. Same little kids that get killed when they're driving these things on the road. So, anyway.
I'm just going to say, if it's capable of more, then it would be considered the high-speed electric device.
And they would be illegal altogether.
Yeah. And state already prohibits kids 15 and under to ride these bikes also.
Yes. Any further discussion? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm going to be in support of this amendment, making it align with what the states are, are already in place. So, hopefully, we can get adapted.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of this amendment? Say aye.
Aye. Yeah.
Roll call on floor amendment number one. Councilmembers Cowden.
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Kanashiro.
Aye.
Wali'i.
Aye.
Committee Chair Carvalho.
Aye.
The amendment passes.
Yeah, again, I've asked.
Second.
This, this one, just adding a, a new, a new section or a new area that says, no electric bicycle may be operated on any sidewalk or other path designed and intended for pure use. So, no one's using a bike lane. They're used from riding on any pedestrian path or sidewalk.
Did I get a copy of that?
Waiting for a copy.
Thank you. Introducing this, I have heard multiple constituents bring up the concerns around the path. I was given some clarity last week, and I now I can't remember if that came from the county attorney or someone else, but that the, it's illegal to ride a bicycle at all on the sidewalk in higher density areas such as Kapaa Leahui, but not in rural communities like Kapahit, for example, where the sidewalk get. And I think that has to do with the design of the road or some sort of features associated with the way that the roads are designed in town. But, because I do, I've been wondering myself because I see kids on the bike, on the sidewalk in Kapaa. But apparently, you are supposed to ride in the road as sharing the road with vehicles in those kind of areas, but not in a community. So, I'm just adding that to the discussion because that's what I was giving clarity by.
Any public testimony on this particular? Lonnie?
For the record, Lonnie Psychos.
Lonnie Psychos.
So, second time. You, you get these things, put them up on the screen so the people at home and the people here know what you're talking about. This is like, like school 101 class in how to run a meeting. Okay? We need to see it up there so the public knows what you're talking about. Secondly, we have police officers back there, but I do believe that it is illegal to ride a bicycle, and thank you very much, on a sidewalk. And so it's terrible riding your bike many places on the road because many vehicles either don't see you or think that you're a moving target in an arcade. So, it pushes the bikes up onto the sidewalks and now the pedestrians are the ones that take the hit from the bicycle. And so the, the real problem here that we have is, in our modern world in which we no longer have low-speed motor vehicles, right? Cars are not designed to go below 30 or 35 miles an hour, right? The transmission pushes them up that high. For fuel economy, they, they want the cars running at these higher RPMs. So, if you're trying to go 10 or 15 miles an hour in town, the vehicle's working against you. And our culture of driving is such that people get really upset when a motorcyclist or a bicycle rider is in the middle of the lane. And so if the bike rider tries to stay off to the side of the lane, now they are at risk of getting either run over because they're not seen or getting pushed into parked cars or trees or utility poles. So, what we have here is a public transportation problem that needs to be addressed by trying to figure out what we're actually trying to accomplish. And then we need a public information campaign so that the public understands, hey, you got to share the road with a bicycle. And if you hit the bicyclist, you're going to get sued and probably lose your house. So, there's real reason to obey traffic law, personal liability reasons. But what we don't have is any clear policy about this. And thus, we got this mishmash of problems. Thank you.
We have someone on Zoom. You can begin.
Aloha, again, Travis Council, Hawaii Bicycling League. Just on this amendment, I want to provide some clarity. Legally speaking, at the state level, low-speed electric bicycles, which is very similar to what you're putting in this definition, are viewed as bicycles and do have the same rights and rules as bicycles at the state level. So, which includes riding on sidewalks in residential and non-commercial zones. I'll, I'll also note that under the state law, it does state that if you are riding a bicycle on a sidewalk, you must yield to pedestrians, provide an audible, either bell or voice warning before overtaking, and have a maximum speed of 10 miles an hour, which I thoroughly believe a low-speed electric bicycle or a traditional bicycle can share the sidewalk with, when doing those, following those rules. So, I would be cautionary that this amendment may conflict with the state law as currently written. If you wanted to amend it to be the high-speed electric devices are banned from sidewalks, that is certainly supportive and aligned with some of the other spaces we've seen. But low-speed electric bicycles are viewed as bicycles and legally speaking, are allowed to ride on sidewalks outside of business districts. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question. In rural areas, and I live in a rural area, so our sidewalk is very narrow at present. I love these kids, can't hear them for anything. And they don't say anything. They don't notice anything. And I, I live in constant vigilance of somebody coming up behind me that could take me out. So, I, I, I think, what, where have you guys identified that as a problem?
Also, I think that's an education problem where informing, you know, we teach kids as, as on my background, we teach kids at elementary schools, the rules of the road, which do include if you are on the sidewalk in a residential zone to yield and provide that audible warning and go slow. And so, to me, that sounds like an educational opportunity. I, I don't believe banning kids from sidewalks, especially in areas where there might not be safe infrastructure elsewhere, is actually going to prove the safety measure that, that I think you're hoping for.
Any further discussion, members?
Yeah, I mean, my inclination, my inclination was to kind of follow the state, which consider an e-bike a bicycle, and then they have certain rules, as a testifier just mentioned, regarding 10 miles per hour, but they're sure to run away. I'm okay with that. I'll take your lead on it. But for me, I'm kind of thinking the way the state law is written already. is written already, I'm okay with the way it is, and, um, not necessarily wanting to ban it further on sidewalks and paths.
You're not hurting my feelings, I'm just, you know, I, the, the concern I have is where we have, and, and maybe the amendment can be further, uh, explained, as where we have designated bike lanes, they should be on the bike lane, they should not be on the sidewalk. I, that, to me, is what drives me nuts, cause we spend millions of dollars on bike lanes, and they're using a sidewalk. Where the designated bike lanes are, are present, it is safe, it, it is safe. It, you know, and I know, understand what the gentleman said about, they teach these kids in elementary, elementary school, bicycle safety, not e-bike safety. Um, the problems we're seeing on the, on the roads right now with our kids on e-bikes, I can guarantee you, they have not gone to training, and they have not, they don't know the rules of the road.
Mm-hmm.
And they're on the sidewalks, and they're not going ten miles an hour, they're zooming up and down, so, I mean, I, I understand, we don't wanna ban it, because I agree, there are some areas, especially in rural areas, where it is safer to be on the sidewalk. But is it safer for the guy walking on the sidewalk for the bike to be on or off the sidewalk? I mean, that's kind of how I see it, right? We're thinking about the bicyclists, what about the pedestrian, what about the kids that are walking on the sidewalk? We're just gonna, is their safety not important? Because we wanna make sure our bikes have the, the, so, again, I'm not a member of this committee, and I'm fine whatever it, where it goes, I'm just saying that, you know, I'm, I am more concerned about the pedestrians that are walking in a sidewalk that was designed for a pedestrian, not a bicycle, than the bicycle who should be on, riding on the road, that's more convenient for him to, or her to be on a sidewalk. So, I, 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 if, if, I'd love to hear the discussion about banning the, these things on sidewalks where designated, uh, bike lanes are, are available.
I see we have the police department on the road, is it possible for me to, um, ask a question?
It, you know what, it might be, Mr. Chair, it might be, I mean, I'm okay if we defer it. And we can, we can spend the time with them, where they have the, this is the first time everybody saw this amendment, so I apologize.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm, I don't have a problem waiting another couple weeks to have the, have them prepare a response, or even with our county attorneys.
I, I think for me, I would like to defer it, cause I think there's a lot of questions that need to be asked as well, so, any other comments here?
Are, are we deferring the whole, the whole bill, or can we talk to the police? Just the amendment?
Which, which technically refers to the bill. Yeah, technically refers to the bill.
Okay, cause I, I, I would really like, since we have the police right here actually, and because we have, um, we have Public Works, and we have, um, prosecutor in here, I, I'd just like to ask a couple questions. This is a committee meeting, we could ask some questions.
Yeah, if they're, if they're, I mean, if they're, if they're prepared.
For, for, um, them to come forward and.
I won't grill you, but.
Answer some questions right now.
Yeah.
I'd like to suspend the rules and have our police officers come up and answer questions.
Thank, thank you so much for being in here, and, um, so, I live in Keeluea, and we have amazing little e-bikers all over the place, like, and they swarm the town, and usually after dark, in the afternoon and after dark, often with no helmets and no lights, but whether it's day or night, they're, they're very good at going anywhere. I just can't imagine how you can actually, uh, enforce on them, that would be my question, cause they're fast, and they can split up, like, hot bees, how, how would you handle enforcement?
Well, for the record, Jay Scrivner, Quay Police. The way, when I was on the road, and, I mean, bicycles will take off on you when you try and stop them. The good thing about living and working here is, hey, that's Mel's kid, that's Arrow's kid. Okay, I'll see you later, and go to the house and talk to mom and dad. I mean, that is one thing. The e-bikes though, like Councilmember Kanashiro said, age limit is fifteen and up, so if they're twelve, thirteen, they're not supposed to be on them. It, it's innocent, it's grandma, it's like, oh, my grandson, my granddaughter wants an e-bike, cool, I'll go buy it. They don't know. So I mean, I think maybe councils, if we could.
Parent of the six-year-old. Unaccountability is what I would say, to take these ten, eleven-year-olds, a six-year-old you could catch, I've been able to stop him, but, um, the, uh, maybe, and then he could get hurt, right? You start having a high-speed chase with a seven, eight-year-old child, how, how do you, how do you stop them, and how would you handle, um, a citation?
That, where, the six-year-old, we, we ask the prosecutors for help with that, because, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna give a six-year-old a ticket. I mean, sorry.
Right, right, I mean, that's, that's my question, we're, we're trying to come to enforceable.
So there, there, there should be something, for the record, Captain Rod Green, there should be something, in my opinion, that states that after, under a certain age, that the parent will be responsible and liable for any citations that the child receives.
And then, so, when it, so I guess some of this I'll ask for the prosecutor, but so, like, we have, most of them are like ten to twelve years old, maybe thirteen-year-olds. Once people are, got a, a license or a, um, permit, they are in their vehicles, so that you've got like six months between fifteen and fifteen points two, I mean, point five, it's six months after, when they're ready for their permit, that's that little narrow window of people who are, um, kind of within the law, so, the majority of them are not, that are problematic. Adults typically aren't problems, they know how, they know the rules of the road, so when you get that ten-year-old or eleven-year-old, um, what would, if we're writing a bill, how could we write a bill that helps you, um, adapt for that ten or eleven-year-old who's riding dangerously in the reverse lane? You know, they're on, they're on both sides of the road, right? No lights.
I just wanna interrupt, because right now, the amendment is the discussion.
Yeah.
So, right now, the only amendment on the floor is whether sidewalk.
Okay, all right, well then, how can I get to the other thing? Can we get to the main?
We get to the main.
All right, I'll ask you a couple more questions in a minute.
Okay, any, any more questions, members? Go ahead.
Actually, it's not a question.
Okay.
It's discussion on the amendment, is that, are we there yet? Okay.
No, hold on, hold on, let me get that.
Cause we're gonna get first.
We're okay, any, any questions for, or?
No questions.
I'm, I'm not sure if it was asked, I missed it. Do you have a way of, uh, enforcing the speed of a bike?
Yeah.
Again, 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 this is, this is only for the amendment that pertains to the sidewalk and pedestrian.
I, I have a question for the amendment.
Question is for you, then.
I.
For Mel?
No, but later.
I have a question regarding that, because, um, most of the kids that are maybe under ten are riding on the sidewalk, right? So, um, we have kids speeding down the sidewalk. How would you handle citing a kid riding down a sidewalk?
How would I, I'm, Chris Scrivner, I'm sorry, Quay Police.
Because this is only about the sidewalk, cause it's.
I have, I have no problem writing tickets. I mean, kid, adult, I mean, the, the age part is where it gets.
Right.
The, the tricky part, but, a fifteen-year.
With the state, if we just said all electric bicycles, so he said high-speed electric bicycles, and we heard that the speed is ten miles per hour, that they should be going now. But, but my question to Chair is, the second part where you say sidewalk, then you, or you say, or other path designed and intended for pedestrian use, is that solely for pedestrian use? Cause isn't like Kialahele Makalai a pedestrian and bike path?
And, and motorized, motorized vehicles or bikes are not allowed on the bike path either?
So, an electrical bike at low speed is safe on a sidewalk, but it's not safe on a path designed for that purpose?
If it's designed for pedestrians, which is what the sidewalk is designed for.
But it, it's not just designed solely for pedestrians, the path.
Right. Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm kind of leaning with the expert in saying that this, this as written, I wouldn't support.
Yeah, I, you know.
That's why you're gonna defer.
What I would, no, 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 what I would suggest, um, because, and it is unfair for me to drop this amendment today after, cause, cause we only got the testimony last night, and I thought about it last night in my sleep, and I figured, you know what, makes sense. Um, I would just ask you to withdraw your motion, we can move forward with the bill today.
Yeah.
And then I'll work with the other entities between now and the council meeting, and if, if it's something that I wanted to pursue, then, then we'll do it at the next council meeting. I don't wanna hold up the bill.
I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw motion.
Withdraw my, withdraw my second.
Back to any more amendments?
So now you guys are back.
Back to the main, uh, the motion.
Unless you have more amendments.
There's any more amendments?
I have three more.
No, 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 we're done. We're going back to the main motion.
As amended.
As amended.
And.
Any questions?
I have more questions, I have a, just a simple question.
Okay, we're gonna, okay, go ahead, suspend.
Those parents, I haven't chased them down, but I have spoken with the parents. When you hand a child a citation, you, would you hand a twelve-year-old a citation, would you hand a ten-year-old a citation?
I don't, no.
Not a ten-year-old, no.
Yeah, ten-year-old, no, probably not, most likely not. Twelve, I, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I would, personally, I would try and take that more of a, as a learning thing, it's like, let's go to your house, let's go talk to mom and dad.
Okay, okay, but you would stop them?
Yeah, absolutely, of course, yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's, I thought you were saying you're not even gonna stop them, so that's.
Oh, no, no, no.
So you would stop them?
I, I thought, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought they were already stopped and had the ticket booked out, and it's like, oh, you're twelve, okay.
I, I thought you were maybe saying, hey, you're not gonna go after the six-year-old, you're not gonna go after the ten-year-old, you're gonna still stop them.
Oh, yes.
Okay, cause I'm stopping them. Um, so you would stop them, and maybe you would typically take them to their house and talk, what if they don't give you their, they, they probably would for you, you're in a.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, like I said earlier, usually, I mean, you, if you don't know personally, you kind of know, is it, oh, it's the yellow house down the street, I mean, an idea, so, yeah, well.
Okay, so.
Educated for lack of an education.
Okay, and I know these kids are educated on it, they just choose to ignore it. Can I talk to the prosecutor, if anybody, unless, does somebody else have questions for the police?
Hold on, does anyone else have questions for our police? No?
No. Keep up the good work, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I'm not surprised with your answers.
Call up our prosecutor.
Hi, thank you. As a mother of kids that aren't quite this age yet, um, uh, how would you deal with, um, I mean, I would hope citations maybe would happen, but like, how, how do you deal with, um, a six, a ten-year-old, twelve-year-old offender, especially if they are a repeat offender? Um, uh, how do you, how do you deal with that from a prosecutor's position? Is there a youth program or anything that's the right way to, to move it over?
Good morning, Rebecca Lee, prosecuting attorney. Um, as it's written currently, this is a civil traffic infraction, so our office's involvement in it is quite minimal. Behavior is to create a process to seize the bikes, right? Because if they lose their bike, and, um, that's gonna stop the behavior. However, since this is a civil, um, infraction, it couldn't be seized as evidence of a crime, so there would need to be some sort of procedure to make that happen. But I think ultimately, that would be the best way to deter this sort of conduct.
Okay.
In my opinion, but I don't, I don't know what, what that would completely entail, so, um, I don't wanna advise that that's the best process without knowing what the procedure would be. Um, I think there would need to be some crime to seize it as evidence of a crime, and also, I am acutely aware that, um, KP does not have a lot of storage space for evidence, um, so, I, but, but I, but, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see the behavior stopping absent there being some sort of consequence. I'm not all that confident that we can just, I, I think that people are aware of the rules, and they continue to.
Right.
Not follow them, so there needs to be some sort of stronger consequence, um, to encourage them to comply with those rules.
I would say parents as well as children. Okay, and if I could, can I talk to Michael Moll?
What, what do you want?
Michael Moll.
Okay. Let's see if I can call Michael Moll.
Public Works, Engineering Roads. First of all, thank you so much for putting in all these bike paths, I know you're a cyclist yourself, and that you're a parent, your kids are finally grown up, almost, but, um, so you must be aware of how much the kids are all over the streets, all over in these smaller towns, would that be accurate?
I, I've, yes, sorry, for the record, Michael Moll, Chief of Engineering, Public Works. Um, yes, I've seen kids on e-bikes in various communities, especially like right after school, that's out, for example, is very prevalent.
Two or three on the same bike, all over the place, is what they're doing for like two or three hours down the roads, even as the sun is going down. Do you, what is your perspective on, um, an unenforceable, in my opinion, uh, ordinance like this? Um, do you see, do you see a methodology that we could actually address the problem, other than creating e-bike parks or something?
Um, I'm not the enforcement group, you just have those guys up here, but I, um, I think that, that, yeah, I think honestly, I just, I think that there's a need to create some restrictions, I think honestly, there's some things in here that, now and then, when it comes back, but the, I understand the need to sync that with the state's law, my understanding is the state is gonna fix their law to have all classes defined next year, probably.
Ooh.
And so then, our law will be not, not the same, we'll change it again, but I, I do think that, that, that defining a Class III e-bike as a high-speed electric device, that the twenty-eight miles per hour was the appropriate limit for that, cause we've now made them illegal by defining them as that. The first, first part of the law, um, makes, makes illegal to ride any, anything over twenty miles per hour on a sidewalk, path, street, alley, highway, trail. Um, so, that was a concern that I had, but I didn't, didn't have a chance to see the amendment and see exactly what was happening with that. You guys can address it how you need. The other thing I, that I've, I've brought up before, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about, um, some very vague language in item C, that talks about operating a v- electric bicycle in a unsafe or otherwise hazardous manner. Later, it says, it is illegal to operate one in a reckless or negligent op- operation of, of the, of the, of the device. I personally think that the negligent and reckless language is good to use, but the unsafe and hazardous language is not good to use, cause it's too vague and too subjective. Um, we don't have laws on the books that say you can't drive a car in an unsafe or hazardous manner. We do have laws in the book that say you can't drive a car in a reckless and negligent manner, and so I think that should be the same for e-bikes as well, honestly. So, that's, but that's, you know, that, that's, that's one of my concerns here. Other than that, um, on the sidewalk issue, that you've tabled that for now, but if that comes back up, sidewalks, um, I think that the existing.
You don't think we should.
I don't think you should prohibit e-bikes from sidewalks. I think that the challenge with that is, I mean, I think it should be the same for all bicycles, as you heard from, from Travis Council at, at HBL. There are places where, under county law, where bikes are allowed to ride, and where they're not, and it should be the same for e-bikes and bicycles. I don't think, the problem isn't the device, it's the behavior, is they're going too fast. Like, I, I can go twenty-five miles an hour on my road bike, and if I do it on a sidewalk, that's not safe, right? I'm not gonna do that. Um, adding to that, I think that the, just because there's a bike, we built a lot of situations on this, and a good example is Ho'oloko Road, um, going to soccer fields, right? We have bike lanes on Ho'oloko Road. We also built the sidewalk about eight feet wide, so that it could be shared if people were biking and walking, because kids, biking, now get, kids can't ride electric bikes, that's up to a certain age, but there are even adults or young adults who aren't comfortable riding on bike lanes next to the car, which is. who aren't comfortable riding on bike lanes next to the car, which is only, you know, six, eight feet away, would prefer to be on the sidewalk. Um, I totally recognize the challenge with narrow sidewalks, and wanting to take Ho'oloko Road from their house in Molokoa, for example, to, um, I'm trying, Ho'oloko Street, um, to, to the soccer fields, um, by, by the stadium, on their bike, or their e-bike, if they're doing it in a, in a safe manner. And again, an older teenager could do that legally on an e-bike.
So I appreciate that you see the difference between a seven-year-old cyclist, or even a sixty-three-year-old cyclist, as a random example, who might not have deep confidence, um, being on the freeway, or that, we don't have a freeway, but at the highway, um, in a, in a, you know, an easement on the highway, from the skilled cyclist.
That's another call, I have ten thirty right now, we'll do caption break.
Okay.
You can do that first, and then go from there.
Okay, 'cause I, I will have a question on that, but I think it's important, but I just want to hear your opinion on it.
Okay.
Just have a do a caption break, and then we'll break back.
Calling back to order. And what I wanted to call upon our expert on Zoom, who can come back online and answer some of the questions that were posed earlier or asked earlier, and then we can go from there. Ready?
Yes. So I had Michael Moll up. And, oh, good. I'm glad that we also have Travis up. And so Travis, when I'm done with Michael, I'll ask you a couple of questions.
Councilmember Collins, I wanted to have Travis first.
Oh, Travis first.
That's what I ordered.
Okay. Okay.
Happy to answer any questions. Thanks for having me.
Okay. Travis, you were hearing the questions I was asking of both the prosecutor and the police. So just to reframe that, very difficult for the police to actually cite a child. It's a civil offense, so the prosecutor can't really do anything. And by the way, I love these kids. So, and I talk to them all the time, and I stop them and I talk to them. I do not believe it's because they are not, they're not educated. They know. They straight up know. And so, a question I would have is, what way do you see, since these under 15 set, even under 10 set, are active users, what pathway do you see having them fit with these bikes that are essentially toys, not transportation? How do you see these toys fitting in our roads?
Thanks for that question. And I would say Kauai and Hawaii are not alone in solving this problem. I sit on a national council of about 50 different organizations, and this is coming up at every single one of those organizations of how to deal with this emerging technology, public demand for these devices, and in a lot of situations, either the challenge of limited enforcement availability, just because it's hard to enforce. So I don't have a simple answer to yours, but I do think a lot of it does boil down to education, enforcement, infrastructure, kind of those core components to that safe system approach that the county and the state adhere to. I would note that a lot of the issues that you're mentioning are already outlawed by county and state law, so I'm not sure that an additional law is needed or adjustment there. But I do think a lot of it boils down to, I know you mentioned they might be educated, but ensuring the parents truly know the device that they might be buying for their children and the appropriate places for those to be ridden versus not ridden, as well as just a general understanding of respecting the other people on either the sidewalk or the roads that they're using these on. I think it's a challenging situation, one that I don't downplay at all. There's certainly safety concerns, and we see this statewide as well. But I do think a lot of it comes to behavioral things, not necessarily legal or strictly enforcement-based things. So I would, I'd lean into working with local organizations like Get Fit Kauai and Waipath, HBL as well, to do a more enhanced education offering. I know it won't reach everybody, but I do think that's a core component to that behavioral change.
Okay. So I guess my last question would be for you, and then maybe I don't need to pull our highways engineer, our road engineer on. It seems to me, I'm asking for accuracy on my perception, that there's a population that typically use the e-bike for transportation, and they fall pretty easily, they follow the rules. Would you say that's accurate mostly? They know how to drive on the road. Have you seen problematic behavior from that, say, 20 to 80 set?
I would, I would say people that are using them to commute, that are truly on electric bicycles, generally follow the rules just as much as anybody else on the road, which is a broad statement. I do think a lot of the issues that we do see across the age groups are not on, you know, legally defined electric bicycles, which you're addressing in this bill as well, those high-speed devices, really anything that can go faster than either the 20, or I agree with Michael, the 28 mile an hour is probably a more reasonable industry standard. But yeah, a lot of those devices, people are not following the rules because they're not legally allowed to be on those devices. They're kind of in a gray zone already. But I do think the people that are commuting on e-bikes, it's a great sustainable, affordable way to get around, generally are following the rules and are not the, not the problem-makers that we're trying to address.
Do you see any examples, since you're on a national piece, where there are communities that address the children who were using these as toys in a successful manner?
I'd say there's a few examples. Communities in like the Pacific Northwest, Portland, Seattle, those types of areas have a great education campaign and effort. A lot of places, especially with nearby kind of school residential areas, would do bike bus, you know, really encouraging people to use them responsibly to get to the school and, and, you know, have a parent or guardian that's leading those. So I think there's some opportunities to work with leaders in the communities to basically provide the positive examples, and hopefully a little bit of scolding when, when, when they don't follow those rules as well.
Thank you.
Of course.
Members, any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Colley.
You just mentioned that 28 miles per hour, you felt that was the more reasonable industry standard. And then we heard from Michael Moll about the state possibly, I mean, if we were looking at, kind of do it the same way the state has at 20 miles per hour, and then the state then is going to change it to 28, do you have any thoughts on, I mean, do you know what's happening at the state level?
Sure, yeah. So we're working closely with Rep. Darius Keila, who introduced the bill last year. Unfortunately, it was vetoed last minute by the governor due on a very small technicality. And it will be reintroduced with that technicality fixed next year. It would update the state definition to follow the industry slash national trend. Over 40 other states have adopted this three-class system Michael mentioned, which would bring the max speed for a low-speed electric bicycle, which falls under the definition of a bicycle, to 28 miles an hour. So my recommendation in this bill is, in theory, you don't actually have to further define the electric bikes, because that is already defined exactly how you guys have it at the state level. And then when the state updates theirs, hopefully early next year, that would align across the whole state. Where the state does not have a definition that you, in this bill, provide additional clarification is on those high-speed electric devices, putting a name on those devices that are not motorcycles, mopeds, but certainly are not low-speed electric bicycles. That's where I feel the focus needs to be.
And then the high-speed electric bicycles would be 28 and higher?
Correct, yeah. Above 750 watts, capable of going more than 28 miles an hour.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I, if I could add one more just comment, both on that, if possible?
Yep.
Just on some of the other pieces that you guys were talking about, I really think another angle to look at along the path, sidewalk, and other places for these devices is establishing a speed limit. You know, on the sidewalks, as I noted, there is a state law that says it's a 10 mile an hour maximum speed for bicycles, including e-bikes. But there aren't definitions, both at the county or the state, establishing speed limits on shared-use paths, multi-use paths, like Kealahele Makalae does not have a state-mandated speed limit. So rather than focusing on the devices so much, focus on the behavior and the speed limit, which would give folks like the Kauai Police ability to enforce speed limits across all devices on those paths.
Thank you for that. Any further questions? Thank you. Any questions for?
For the record, Lonny Psychos, this is a very interesting topic here. My father was an industrial safety engineer, and I tend to look at the world, and I'm alive today because of my focus on personal safety. The issue, one of the things that I see in this bill is that because you're creating a civil fine, both the police and the prosecutor are very much handicapped in what the outcome would be if there was a successful, I'm not sure prosecution's even the correct word to use, for whatever occurs in court for a civil activity. Were you to make, remove it from being civil and make it a misdemeanor, at the misdemeanor level, it's quite easy to enforce. The outcomes would be more predictable, and maybe impress upon the parents, because this is what I have to say to the parents out there. Mel and I live in the same subdivision. And so if some 10-year-old, or 14-year-old, or 15-year-old decides to get run over by me, and I kill them, right, they get seriously injured, the parents are going to sue me, right? My insurance and my lawyers will countersue the parents. And so what's, what will make the most impact on the parents of the children that we're discussing is the parents need to understand the degree of liability that they have in allowing their children to be on these devices, right? I would be shocked if there were not already incidents of kids completely violating traffic laws and causing a traffic accident. And so to all the parents out there, I'm 71 years old, I am protected as an elder in the state of Hawaii, and if your child assaults me with an electric bike, it's not going to be a good legal outcome for the parents. It will not be. And so that's what we need to focus on, is right now, the parents think no harm, no foul, and they're not considering that their children could get hurt. They should be considering that their liability of getting sued, or of them engaging in child abuse with their own child, endangering the child. Thank you.
Excuse me, this is my first time testimony, testifying, so I'm just a little scattered. I agree with everything. It's too bad we cannot legislate common sense. I think if we could legislate common sense, this would all be removed. I do agree with everything. I think you have to have legislation so that you can have litigation, and people don't feel it unless it affects their pocket. So with regards to everything that was said, whether it's a motorized vehicle, or we're talking about speed, speed is important, because I can get seriously injured as a kupuna with somebody just riding a bicycle. It doesn't even have to be motorized, right? So I was thinking with the education part, right now, as motorists, and I want to encourage the council to keep at it, because, you know, when automobiles were first introduced, they had to share the roads with horses, right? So it's a learning process. We're in this kind of weird transition stage where we're all just learning. So, where was I going with this? So as motorists, as drivers, we know, excuse me, that when we pass, or when we go faster, we go to, we pass on the, on the driver's side. So maybe on the sidewalks, we can designate a lane where if you are not walking, if you're on a motorized vehicle, and trust me, there are people who jog with their strollers who are going pretty fast, too. I could get seriously injured. That if you're not walking, what's the speed for walking? Five miles an hour? And if you're more than that, then there's a designated lane for you to be going safely, so that you're not at danger of hitting somebody as you are, you know, walking. So it's, it's kind of a broader situation. And yes, public safety should be of the highest priority. So just keep at it. I just want to encourage you to not give up. Thank you.
Honestly, I would suggest we defer this item. I think in retrospect, amendment we passed, we might have cut off anybody that has a motorized e-bike that goes up to 28 miles per hour, and I think that's not consistent with the state. So rather than us trying to like keep going back and forth on amendments, I'll say I would rather we defer, and then maybe look at the amendments again, and, you know, considering that the state is looking to update it, too. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to amending our language to look like the states, and then if the state amends it, then we amend it further. But, because I do think some of the stuff in here should be in here, you know, that Council Chair Posa has put in. So I just, yeah, in retrospect, though, I think that amendment we passed, I think we cut out a whole section of bikes, which we unintentionally meant to do, so.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you. I tend to agree with Councilmember Konashiro. I'm a little concerned about the 28 mile an hour switch as well, especially now after hearing from Michael Moll about that, because I'm really concerned about limiting legal use by responsible adults in this. Like, I understand that we're going after kids misusing it, and I think we need to be really careful about how we do that without punishing those. For example, a dear friend who paddles for Hanalee called me about this. She's really concerned. She has a knee injury and uses her electric bike to get to work and doesn't want to be limited. And I think the manufacturer, be it, I think, matching the manufacturer's thing of going up to 28, because we're banning them entirely, we're not restricting them, we're not limiting them, we're banning the use of anything over 28 miles an hour, I think we need to be careful of that, especially if the state is going to be changing and creating classes next year, then we're going to be changing our thing to match whatever the state classes become, you know. I mean, I think it is important that we focus on reckless use wherever possible, and unfortunately, without education and enforcement, which is harder for us to legislate here in this body, it's going to be really hard to implement any of this anyway. And so, I mean, just like, we don't ban all guns because of some reckless use, we don't ban all cars because people can use them, we have to have those specific rules that keep people safe. And so focusing on what those are and the reckless activities that are happening and stuff. But I, yeah, I genuinely get concerned about limiting legal access by responsible adults. And I think we need to, and I don't know how, and being the newest council member, maybe somebody here has some bright idea that I don't, but if there is some way to work into the bill, education requirements, or some sort of educational component that puts this out, because we can pass all the bills in the world, but if everybody on Kauai doesn't know that their kid's not allowed, because there's already existing really good e-bike laws, that I think, obviously, Councilmember Collins, you're saying that you're seeing those broken every day, basically. So how do we get the education and how do we get the enforcement? Because as far as, you know, I feel like our KPD has a lot more important things to be focusing on as well, rather than tracing down kids on e-bikes, although I really appreciate you guys.
And I'm going to also say, I think deferment is something that I would very much support. I care about these populations, both the population that uses an e-bike for transportation, and I actually envision in the future that people can, if we have a, if we have a safe place for them to ride, it's a way for people from Kapaa to get to Lehi, you know? And it will really address a lot of our congestion. Same with Pohi. We have some people like Michael Moll, who maybe can come from Kalau to Lehi, but that's, he's, he's the oddball. So I think that we want to be actually moving to adapt for ways for these to be legal forms of transportation. Those people very typically are not breaking any laws. It's our children, young children, who are playing with them as toys. They aren't using them for transportation, they're using them for toys. So they have a completely different motivation. Everything they're doing right now is already illegal, and I don't agree that the parents, short of like what Mr. Psychos said, where you change it to it's actually a crime, and then they can be faced with, you know, parental mismanagement, or the bike gets taken away, unless there's some really hard consequence. What we're doing in this bill, however well-intended, I don't think it's going to make a difference at all. And I appreciate the intention of it, but I, I prefer the idea of deferring it till we can be really in alignment with the state. And it's good to have a rule on the books, so there's at least something that says this is what's wrong. But, yeah, I'm on, on page with Councilmember Konashiro's suggestion.
I just had questions. I mean, is the, is the only hangup right now at 20 miles an hour? Is that it? Or are you guys intending to change the substance of this bill? Because I disagree. I think it will make a difference. I think parents are buying these bikes because they don't know it's illegal. I think once they know it's illegal, then they're not going to buy the kid the bike. I think that's just going to happen. Not all. I mean, you know, it's like fireworks, right? Some parents buy their kids fireworks, knowing that it's illegal. But I think in this case, that it will make a difference. Maybe not a very big difference, but you know, we try, this is here to save lives, and we had this discussion, we spent a lot of time on this bill. Randall, thank you very much, our staff room, and the prosecutor, and police, and everyone. The, the main purpose of this bill was to use this as a tool, not for KPD to go out and cite people. It was to use this bill as a tool to educate the public. Do a campaign, I think Ms. B.K., the prosecutor, working with the police department, could put out an educational campaign utilizing the bill as a tool, not go out and cite kids and harass kids. So I'm just curious, if it's just the 20 and the 28 mile an hour, which I intend to agree with, then we can fix that today. But if there's other things you guys want to work on, then I'd be interested to know what that is.
Chair, I would say that for me, I am, I'm feeling good about going back to 28 miles an hour, due to the manufacturing thing, in the attempt to not limit, like I said, responsible adult use. I don't really have concerns outside of that, if we're not going to be addressing the sidewalk thing. I think if we are going to be bringing back the sidewalk thing, I think we need to think a, I would like to think a little bit more about that, but I have time to do that if we defer. If that comes back, I, I do have concerns about that restriction as well in certain areas. And to Vice Chair Colley's point, we have a bike path as well, so, and we don't allow motorized vehicles, but maybe there is some allocation of bikes under 20 miles an hour or speed limits. And I, I, I think it's important, and I understand where you're going, but I, mostly for me, it's the speed, the 20, going back to 28 miles an hour, and I do have concerns also about the bike path as per what Michael.
I'll just say, my intention is not to bring back the sidewalk amendment. Based on what we heard today.
The other thing I thought, based on testimony, too, and even including the written testimony that your amendment was based on, because she excluded the Kealahele Makalae, right? But our expert testifier today, too, also said, you probably should establish a speed limit for that shared-use path, right? So whether it's somebody running, I mean, there's a lot of different ways kupuna or whoever could get injured by somebody going too fast. I actually don't, I, I, I think it's important to make the sidewalks safer. Sidewalks that are primarily sidewalks, right? I mean, the bike path is a shared-use path, but a sidewalk that is primarily there, it's relatively narrow, it's there primarily for pedestrians, I think it's important that we get that amendment back in. And I think the simplest way to do it was just to take the expert's suggestion and say, not just say, electric bicycles, but say, high-speed electric bicycles. So then that would be over 28 miles, right? And exclude them completely.
But they're banned, right?
Huh? It would be excluded from being on sidewalks.
But they're already entirely banned.
This bill currently bans the high-speed electric, so that, that's, they can't be anywhere.
They can't be anywhere.
So.
But I agree with the speed limit. I agree with what you're saying.
I mean, how do you, then the other thing is, on the sidewalk, the safety, the safe speed, they said, is 10 miles. So that's obviously lower than the 28 mile per hour capability. So you would still have to put something in language to say that's, that you got to stay below that.
That's existing state law, so I would say signage is probably.
Signage of no more than 10 miles.
Which we really wouldn't have to pass a bill for, we would just have to work with the public works team to like provide signage.
So no, no amendment required.
I think as long as we worked with administration, we could do it without actually working into the bill.
Yeah. I could support this today, though.
Yeah, so I mean, no, I'm okay. It was just that miles per hour thing, but I didn't want to keep rushing and go back and forth with the staff on amendments, because I didn't think, I was pressing on it passing, like today, but.
And it's not. It's not, to be honest. It's just that if that was the only hangup, then we can, we could. But if there's other concerns that we want to explore, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, for me, that was the only hangup. I just, yeah, regretted my decision, just based on, yeah, rethinking about the speeds.
You know, putting the 28 back would be good for me. I mean, only reason why I'm saying I think we need to defer it is just, in my view, an unenforceable bill. But it's not going to address the problems that we have, but it at least clarifies that that's not legal, although at the state level, that's already not legal, I don't believe, to be riding under, at under 15 years old. You know, almost all of this is already not legal. But I can go with it if it's 28 miles an hour. And I will say that because this is a community, high adrenaline little boys has been my specialty for many decades, having surf and skate shops and alternative middle school, and this is a population that I have a really easy interface with them and their parents. And, you know, some of these parents, who I've talked to, and they are my friends, and I've known them since they were five years old, our school teachers, elementary school teachers, they don't see it as a problem. We had a suggestion made by our traffic safety captain, or I might have the term wrong, but, that, that signs go up in the stores near the bikes, and that's probably a state administrative rule. I'm not sure where that's at, but I think that is a really good suggestion, that there's at least a sign where they're buying them. And I don't know where they got this little, pretty fast little electric bike for a six-year-old, but even on their scooters, they got electric scooters, there's all kinds of electric-propelled things that these little kids are on. If there's at least a warning sign or something like that in the stores, it might help. But I don't believe that the parents, educating the parents changes any minds. Some of them maybe.
Also, just maybe we take like a five-minute break and consider what we can do to get it back. I think the staff is discussing if we do a friendly amendment.
Can you, can you, can we take a recess? And I'll call, we'll take the taxicab bill, because that should be very quick, because I know these big guys have been sitting here, and these guys, they, time is money for them. I appreciate that, and I appreciate them here. So if you guys, no objection, we'll go ahead and recess this committee, and then we'll take. So if you guys, no objection, we'll, we'll go ahead and recess this committee, and then we'll take, um...
Sure.
The, the taxi cab bill, which is in the...
So this time I'd like to recess our, our committee meeting.
Okay. Second.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting. Clerk Kenny Peasery, Bill Number 2974.
Bill Number 2974, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 23, Kuaicucki Code 1987, as amended relating to regulation of business and trades, taxi cab rates for touring and chartered time.
To approve.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the members?
If I could just, just...
Call the Chair proposal.
All this does is, long overdue, by the way, all this does is increase the rate too for our county, the taxis that operate in the county. They have two rates. One is basically time and miles, which is your standard taxi, hey, I need to go to the airport. Uh, but they also have a rate too that allows them to basically rent out their cab a, a, as tours. So they'll take, they'll take visitors on tours. And that rate has not be, has not been increased for many, many, many years. And, uh, all we're raising it from is from $60 an hour to $90 an hour. That's, that's all this does. So I would hope you can support this, so they can, uh, start getting, with gas alone, I mean, just the gas, fuel prices alone from, from the last increase to now is significant, so, thank you.
Any questions from the members? Anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, call meeting back to order. Any final discussion from the members? Councilmember Houghton?
Um, thank you very much, guys, I appreciate you all working on this. I talked to, um, some of my family, uh, Stevie Carvalho, he's a taxi driver for many years. Super thankful that we're working on this. And so, yeah, strong support for me, thank you, guys.
Councilmember Cowden?
I, I, it's easy for me to support this. I, I, and whenever I travel, I always take cabs rather than Uber, because I really appreciate all that it takes to become a cab driver. And I appreciate all the education I've gotten from our, our cab driver community, and that in fact has influenced me from years back, and why I choose cabs when I go where I go.
Anyone else? No, I'll just thank Council Chair Proposal for bringing it up too and bringing it to our attention and putting it on the floor. With that, uh, take a roll call vote.
Roll call and a motion to recommend approval of Bill Number 2974. Councilmembers Bullasan.
Aye.
Carvalho.
Aye.
Cowden.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Kuli'i.
Aye.
Proposal.
Aye.
Committee Chair Conasiro.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, seeing no further business and hearing no objections, uh, Finance and Economic Development Committee is now adjourned.
Thank you. Okay, so the, the committee meeting started at recess, well, five minutes? Let's do a caption break, 10 minutes? (inaudible)
Bill number twenty-nine-sixty-two draft one, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter ten, article three, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven is amended relating to the West Kauai Community Plan implementing ordinance twenty-twenty, County of Kauai Planning Department applicant Z A twenty-twenty-five dash four, numela, West Kauai Community Plan.
To approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and then...
I'd like to amend as circulated. Can I get a second?
Second.
All it's getting passed around, I'll just say that, based on the last meeting we had, there are some, just housekeeping items to this amendment. And then, um... Let me make sure my notes are correct. Yeah, it's just a housekeeping amendment to incorporate the, the fire ordinance.
Councilmembers, any discussion on the amendment? No discussion. Any public testimony on the amendment?
As amended, oh, oh, back to the planning commission, and I'll, in the past meeting, we had this conversation, oh, I need a second.
Second.
In the past meeting, at the very end, it came up, you know, there was this question on the thirty percent for ag workers, and is the housing ordinance going to get triggered with this development? And so, we deferred the item and had discussions. Councilmember Cowden, for me, but we ended up with the same result, so we decided to, um...
Co-introduce.
Ended up with the same result, so we decided to, um...
Co-introduce.
Co-introduce the amendments. But based on the discussions, um, the, the plan is to send it back to planning commission. In this particular case, it was, the fight was over the thirty percent ag workers, and the decision was made that I will send it back to planning commission, so, and there's probably a better location that they can pick for this type of housing that will also house ag workers, and it'll be more readily available to be done. The fact of the matter, and the discussion came out, that if it goes forward at the location infrastructure, it's going to take a while to do. It's just not gonna, we're just not going to get the, what we're anticipating as far as housing and housing for eggs, so...
And just for clarity, this is numela.
Numela, yeah.
Yeah, numela is what this is about.
Councilmember, any additional discussion? Any testimony? Seeing none? The motion is to refer to bill two-nine-sixty-two back to planning commission, roll call vote.
The motion is to refer, draft one, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter ten, article three, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven is amended relating to the West Kauai Community Plan implementing ordinance twenty-twenty, County of Kauai Planning Department applicant Z A twenty-twenty-five dash six, Ka'ava Nui, West Kauai Community Plan Amendment.
To approve.
Second.
Like to, um, motion to approve, uh...
Amendment.
Amendment circulated, sorry.
Is it moved any second?
Need a second.
Uh, the ag worker housing, thirty percent ag worker, question on the floor was, are they going to be required to do affordable housing based on the county housing ordinance? And the answer is yes, they are going to have to do it anyways. And so, in discussions with the landowner and planning, they decided...
If you can just make it a little bit more clear, but yes.
I'd like to suspend the rules. Home and Land Planning Department, you have the floor?
Property owners, as well as, when it came to numela, the agricultural tenant that was associated with that property. The thirty percent proposal was recommended by the planning commission, pretty much in direct reaction to the agricultural tenant. At this time, right, I think you folks just moved to send the numela section back to the planning commission. So the agriculture tenant really has families living in there that are in fact, on the GNR planting camps, that are in fact associated with agriculture activity on the property, but then you have a lot of families that are not. And so, some of the message from GNR to the proposal, and supportive of the proposal that councilmember Cowden and Konashiro have drafted.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional...
Back to the main motion.
Any other additional questions as amended?
Prove, bill number twenty-nine-sixty-five draft one is amended. Councilmembers Carvalho.
Aye.
Cowden.
Aye.
Konashiro.
Aye.
Kuli'i, eighteen, relating to a parcel located in Makaweli, Kauai, County of Kauai Planning Department.
To approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Any public testimony? Seeing none, any final discussion?
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Any public testimony? Seeing none, any final discussion?
Roll call, councilmembers Carvalho. Chris Carvalho.
Aye.
Cowden.
Aye.
Konashiro.
Chair Bulasun.
Aye.
Motion passes. Bill number twenty-nine-sixty-eight draft one, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter eight, Kauai County Code nineteen eighty-seven is amended relating to zoning, zoning boundaries in Makaweli and Wahe'ava, Kauai, County of Kauai Planning Department.
Yourself and councilmember Cowden, and this is just to remain consistent with our last amendment that we passed, which deletes the rhetorician ag workers.
Any discussion on the amendment? Any public testimony on the amendment? Final discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote.
I'm just going to say, I appreciate actually both of our big landowners for working to add more housing and to do it in a way that supports our agricultural needs, and so, thank you for being good landlords.
Roll call to approve floor amendment. Councilmembers Carvalho.
Aye.
Cowden.
Aye.
Konashiro.
Aye.
Kuli'i.
Aye.
Committee Chair Bulasun.
Aye.
Motion passes. Back to the main motion.
Any discussion on the final bill as amended? Any public testimony? Any final discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote.
Roll call on a motion to approve bill number twenty-nine-sixty-eight draft one is amended. Councilmembers Carvalho.
Aye.
Cowden.
Aye.
Konashiro.
Aye.
Kuli'i.
Aye.
Committee Chair Bulasun.
Aye.
Motion approved and amended.
Seeing additional items?